Please rise. We pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Hearing none, the motion carries. Let's enter into the capital projects workshop. Nothing was attached. And I know we all have the list from prior. Mike, do you happen to know what you titled the spreadsheet you gave two meetings ago?
I shared, I have a database to make sure it's like.
Do you? Oh, there's something late, he has on his. Good to know.
Sorry, I'm slow. All right, you should get a.
Yep.
Put principal facility needs list or capital projects.
It was principal facility needs list.
From August?
No, it's called, and you're on it. It's called principal facility needs list twenty-two, twenty-three dash updated, because we updated a bit. So.
It was in September sport meeting.
So there's a tab on the bottom that I just named November twenty-two list. Twenty-two.
Okay, and then we also have each school tab with their list of priorities.
Correct, and so the school tabs were effectively the same, I referenced those, so to make it easier to look at one thing, what Lisa had asked was to, she said that, given the dollars, what would you start working on? She asked Mike and myself, you know, that the roofs are getting where they're, you know, we just did Betty Keefer, but we're pretty much up to date on the roofs.
We've got breathing room now, yeah.
That, you know, if you're looking at big capital expenditures, not some of the smaller things that happen all the time, but more of the, you know, like a roof, you know, sort of major expenses, where would you start next? And so Mike and I talked, and really we'd start looking at the older buildings, looking at the exterior of the buildings, the doors, siding trim. Also at the elementary schools, we would look at, we've talked about this actually over the past few years before, about the carpet in those gyms. Like, for example, it was one of Principal Hoffman's priorities at Betty Keefer. And, and those bleachers are, even though they're not used as much, I mean, if you're gonna go replace carpet, you might look at those, because they're the same model that were like at the old wood bleachers with no, you know, no steps or rails and things like that. So, you know, so we sort of looked at that per building and put very, very rough costs on. And then also looked at, there's a couple other items as we go by per building that were some of the things that the principals had put down, or that we thought would be a priority. We just sort of, I mean, that's where we'd start with big capital items. But then, of course, we can dive further in details on how, you know, where you want us to go and look at.
Okay. Do you have any input on this, Mike?
No, other than, from a building standpoint, you know, roofing has been taken care of. The next logical step for me would be to start addressing the exteriors of the buildings. Along with that would be windows, doors, siding. But knowing that once we tear into a building, I know that we're gonna have issues, but I don't know the extent of it, so it's something to be mindful of. And then after that, then we would look at like mechanical systems, electrical, you're basically starting a renovation.
Right.
And so do we, you know, do we try to piecemeal it? With, with the funds we have, that may be what we do, maybe I pick a building, the worst of the buildings, and just start piece by piece. It's gonna take a while, like the roofing did, but I don't know how else to do it when the deferred is on the scale that it is right now, I don't know how else to go at it than by just chipping away. But exteriors would be the next logical thing, capital-wise, that I personally would go forward with.
We did have in one thing, you'll see like at Spirit Lake, I think we have new carpet classrooms. Some of the older buildings, I mean, we did try to, we did rest some of that at Athol this year, about forty-five thousand. You know, we did some critical things at, like Lakeland High the year before, replaced like the Commons carpet. I mean, that was original to the Commons. So, I mean, it was definitely time. So some of those, and we did Garwood's sort of main hallways. You know, so some of those carpets too, that becomes a, I mean, that is needed work. We did Mountain View this summer. And also that it sort of, there's a staff bump and morale on that, you know, when you have some of that really, you know, older carpet that has some of the stains and stuff, and it's twenty-five years old. Right, so, you know, some of those on the older buildings, we definitely, we did put that on the list too, you know, so it's sort of, you know, picking the things.
Right now, we're just being aggressive on, on things that need the most attention, just based on the age. Once we get this stuff up and rolling, it's easier to come up with a long range plan for replacement as well. It's just that it's, it's hard right now, because no matter where I look or where you look, there's something that needs addressed, like aggressively. And so, again, we're just chip, I'm chipping away, and then trying to hit the things that affect the building the most. You know, which is why the roofing was so important, because that affects the entire building. And so, you know, siding affects curb appeal, but it also has a mechanical.
Right.
Piece to it too. At Spirit Lake Elementary, we're plugging holes, literal holes in the side of the building, that you can see studs, you know, and that just, that just bothers me.
Well, yeah.
So, but the unfortunate part is, is there's such a big scope of work that needs to happen, I really think that we're only gonna probably be able to just do one at a time. You know, pick the worst school, and that's what we go after.
Or we just have to rearrange our money. There's some money floating around out there I still need clarification on, because I thought I heard somebody say in a meeting we were at recently, that the prior superintendent allocated a couple hundred thousand dollars to each school, I would think middle and high school, for sports programs. Is that true in the school's budgets? They have that much allocated to them? Does anybody know?
For sports travel and coaches.
I don't know what it was, but she thought it was priority to give them all this money, and looking at this, I don't think that's priority anymore. I noticed that the bathrooms for Spirit Lake Elementary aren't on there, and they're horrific. In fact, they can't even use the bathrooms where they first lock in the doors. So I think the money's there, we just have to, I think we're just gonna have to reallocate, and some people might not like it, but I have to agree, our buildings are falling apart, and they're not. I mean, some of them, I don't even know how we could expect students to even be happy to be there when they walk in. It's like walking in something, some other place, not Idaho. Sort of sad, especially the junior high and some of the elementary. So, I would agree that the outsides need to be done, the sightings and the windows. The doors, I thought we already talked about, as far as a safety concern. Did we replace some of those, or?
We just got a, the only contractor who'd give us a bid. I mean, just last week, I believe was when that came, for Lakeland Middle School.
Yeah, Friday.
And that was.
Three hundred thirteen thousand.
Three hundred and thirteen thousand just to do that, which is.
And that includes door frames, because a lot of the problem is not just the doors, it's the frames. In fact, if you walk over to Lakeland Middle School, you'll see a lot of doors that have brackets that we've attached up in the corner, because the frames are compromised.
Right.
To put new doors on frames that are compromised is just, you don't wanna do that. So, yeah, that's a good, that's a good, a good current bid, and that's probably an indication on what we could expect to pay at some of the other schools. It's a hard market right now to try to get a contractor to come out. I called all the big players, Gino, TW Clark and Spokane, and they just flat told me on the phone, we're not, we can't. We just can't even come to look at it. So, the one contractor that I did get to come look at is DKI, which I've done a lot of work with. They did all the rebuilding of all of the damage caused by the roof leaks back in twenty-seventeen, excuse me. And they do good work, but they were the only ones that would even come out and take the time to even look at it to give me a bid, so.
And some of that, some of that type of work, you know, for example, we'd have to, you know, if we move forward that bid, we certainly need to, that won't be done till the summer, we can't. We'd have to, we can't have the doors not.
Yeah, material's four months out. Just waiting to place the orders for months.
Absolutely understand that. I think where some of my own personal frustration comes from is, we keep saying, and we keep saying, and we keep saying, and then there's the process, and then, you know, and, and it's just like snails moving. And, which, you know, I get, it's government, there's hoops, and I totally understand all that. Respecting that, you know, we're at three hundred and thirteen for those doors, I'm saying seal the deal, because it has to be done.
You're on the same, we're on the same page, trust me. I, I don't, I can't speak to the money part of it, like, I'm not that involved in that part of the business, but I'm a mover and shaker. When I say, when someone says, let's move.
Yeah.
I get, we get with it. I just need to know what we're doing, and I get the ball rolling. I completely agree.
Okay.
That the doors and stuff need to be replaced. That's just one building of several that that needs to happen at.
I agree.
But we have to start somewhere.
Correct.
Right, so, yeah.
Well, my, my frustration with the middle school is, is I know when I very first came on the board, what, the way the ex, the past superintendent presented it to me, was that that building was like majorly backburnered, because we were just gonna let that one go, because we were gonna get a bond to build a new one. And going into that school, it's like a third world country environment. And I, you know, my logic to her was, you know, if you're planning on selling your house, do you let it go and fall to ill repair, and then try and sell it? That makes absolutely no sense to me. But to me, I mean, the middle school, because it is our middle school, we need to help it tremendously. And Spirit Lake and Athol, those two are so sad-looking, and I don't understand how we got so far down this hole of, there they go.
Yeah.
But, and I know the projects are huge.
Yeah.
But they're important and significant, because I don't see any of our buildings going by the wayside.
Right.
I mean, we need them.
Right.
So. And more. Yeah, and more. I just wanna fix what we got right now.
Yeah. Yeah, that's my, that's my world every day, and I, you know, I grew up in this district, and the main reason that I took this role on was to make a difference, you know, because I've got my kids going through here, my nieces, my nephews. I can't speak to why the, the buildings are in the state they are prior, I mean, much prior to me.
Right, right, right.
Even coming on to do this, but I'm like, I want it all fixed too. It's just how do we go about it, and it's just gonna be daunting, and I'm, I'm willing to get in there and mix it up to get it done. I just, you know, I just need to know what you guys wanna do.
I wanna major, wave a magic wand.
That's, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so Klein's DKI, and I see the bits attached for, yeah.
Let's ask the obvious question, I guess. How much money do we have to work with?
The, with the, you know, the bleachers and the projects coming out, we're, you know, the plant facility levy is gonna wind down. So, the transfer, if you move to that transfer calculation tab. So here is our total expenditures and transfers out from last, from June thirtieth. I'm just calculating how much. And so, our ending fund balance was that eight point nine million. If we wanted to end at our sixteen point six seven percent fund balance, that would be six point three million, so the amount to transfer to would be that two point six five eight million. In budget, I was estimating we had transferred two point eight, so it's a little less than that, or we could do the full two point eight and be a little less than sixteen point six seven percent fund balance, but that's the math. I haven't made the transfer yet.
Okay. And that would, that mainly would pay for these large projects that won't get done until the next budget year. Is that right?
Oh, for sure. So I would transfer the dollar, so Cindy and I thought it was best to, we're gonna create a new fund, four twenty-one, just to be completely separate. Four twenty will still be there, because four twenty's still gonna get taxes and, from back taxes and, you know, for, it's gonna trickle in, right?
Just a dribble.
Just a dribble, but I didn't wanna mix and match things, so we'll let the dribble there, and we can always move that. But to have this as the official money, the board said, yes, please transfer that, that we'll have it. It's gonna be clean, starting from zero.
That's a good move.
And then, so that's what we'll have to start with, and when, we'll do what we can with what we have, and go from there.
Do we have, now this is general fund money here, talking about it here.
Correct.
So do we have any of the ESSR money that we can tap for some projects?
We can do it one of two ways. One, we could get a, do a project, we did a couple, like with the Timberlake High School, some of the HVAC.
HVAC, yeah.
Came out of ESSR dollars.
Right.
So we can do that, we have to do a capital projects request with the state, get approval therein, and then go. I think another way we can go, my only concern on that, on some of it, is with the delay of just getting projects going. And I have this year and next year to spend the dollars, could I, you know, would, just because of the glacial speed as,
Do we have a set of time?
Right, so, you know, really I think that what, talking with Lisa, we thought that to use our remaining ESSR three dollars, because that's really what's left. We're gonna do the curriculum adoptions, which will address the learning and loss component of that, of those requirements, so we'll cover that. Some of the bonuses that are being paid out are gonna be using ESSR dollars. And then I'd like to just use the ESSR dollars for other eligible expenses, custodial, technology, things like that, that we, you know, may have paid from other sources, but at least we use those for eligible expenses, and should allow us to have, at the end of the year, some more capacity for another transfer.
So, that's really the, the number that we're looking at for the next twelve to eighteen months?
Yes, yeah, I would say by, again, this time of year, next year, when we sort of see where we land with fund balances, let's say we were, you know, again, at twenty percent fund balance or something, or whatever, you know, that might be. You might say, okay, yeah, let's bring it back down to near these levels, and then be another transfer over.
So I guess the reason I ask that question is, you know, it's obvious, if you're gonna start spending money, you gotta know how much money you got to work with.
Where is it gonna come from?
And where's it gonna come from, and so forth. So, then it becomes a matter of prioritizing the issues, building by building, or taking the whole building in one at a time, or, you know, what are the kind of approach we can kind of land on? But, you know, and then fitting the projects into that budget line. That make sense? The one thing that I kinda wanna ask about, Mike, maybe you can help with this. One of the, you know, the exterior of the buildings are deteriorating as time goes by. Seemingly some of that is from lack of, not only, well, let me rephrase. Part of that is due to the age of the buildings. The part of it is due to the fact that we haven't maintained the exterior of the buildings to the level that we could, or perhaps should have. And so consequently, you know, paint is peeling, and raw wood is showing, and when raw wood shows and is subject to the weather, then it begins to deteriorate even further.
Correct.
So, where I'm going with this is, kind of, what is the plan for, at least in the, in the short run, painting and taking care of the buildings on the exterior, until we get to the point where we can do kind of a wholesale thing of ripping all the siding off and replacing it?
Well, paint labor is a huge issue for me right now. I, in fact, as it stands right now, I don't have a paint crew. I had one gal doing it this past summer, and she left the district altogether, she was my paint lead. So, as with a lot of things we deal with, I'd have to probably rely a lot on outside contractors to help take up some of that for me, moving forward.
Okay.
Which is, I know is, is an added cost, but I don't know how, I don't know how else to do it. And again, a lot of these buildings have been in the state for quite a while. I can't even remember the last time, even before me coming upon in this position that we had a exterior paint crew go around. It's been, been a while.
Some of the buildings, like at, like at, like at Athol, we, we really can't, you know, strip and paint right now. We, we'd be, the paint, it'd last a couple years and be away, because there's not a good enough surface anymore.
Yeah, paint is only as good as what's underneath it.
Right, so some of the buildings are, at that point, but certainly, once you have.
On the other hand, you know, we can't just let, as was kind of suggested a while ago, fall apart while we're waiting to, you know, get to the real project.
No, we have to, you have to approach it, well, for me anyway, and this is my opinion, you have to approach everything in a preventative mindset. The problem is, is that I'm trying to make up a large gap here of years, right? And I don't know, I mean, we started on the HVAC, on the PM side of things, made a tremendous difference on reliability across the board. Well, that's one layer, I mean, preventative goes into every aspect of a building, including the exterior. That's where I'd love to be, but I'm still trying to dig out of this massive hole that I'm in right now to get to that point. But in the short term, what I'd have to do is, I'd have, again, I'd rely on outside contractors to help absorb some of that, because I just don't have the bodies. To do it on the scale that it needs.
So theoretically, if we prioritize one or two buildings where that really needs to happen, we need to bite the bullet and say, go find a contractor and get these buildings painted and brought back up to the level they should be. Theoretically, that could be one of the projects that we identify with these funds, correct?
Correct, and, and we felt that at Athol, Spirit Lake, Lakeland Middle, there, and even John Brown, that those four buildings are our older buildings from the sixties, that, like, you know, painting, they need more work than just painting, that those are the ones that we really need to replace trim, replace siding, that it's at that level. Now, if the windows are fine, then maybe you don't hit the windows, right, and save on that. You know, and maybe you look at the doors, and maybe half the doors are, are still decent, maybe you just, you pick the worst of those doors and start doing the exterior there. But that, those four buildings, as far as that need to be done the most, that, yeah, if we could just get a painting contractor to strip and paint, that would be great, but we don't think that might, might, might last.
Well, just looking at the two that are up there, replacing siding and trim, we're looking at almost nine hundred thousand dollars for those two buildings.
I believe Mike had General Construction go out there, and he asked, what if I did, what was the scope?
I had him look at Athol to redo the siding and the windows and doors as one project. Barring anything on the inside, once we started peeling that siding off, that'd be about, about five hundred thousand, is what he told me.
And that.
On that size of a building.
Then when was that?
That was a year ago? Maybe not quite a year ago. Maybe a little less than that.
Do you have to add some?
We bumped some when the door quote came in, a hundred thousand dollars more than we thought. I mean, so the, all the costs are really estimates now, and things are sort of shocking, honestly, when you get some prices. So, yeah, and certainly let, if we picked a building, let's say we went to Athol, and so, okay, we wanna do this, you know, we can estimate that siding trim be three hundred to four hundred thousand, but we wouldn't know till we really get bids. We think we're in the ballpark, though.
Well, let's see, maybe there's another approach, if we say at Athol, we'll spend five hundred thousand dollars on the exterior of the building. As, as far as that goes. Beyond that, you know, maybe you have to pick and choose which doors and windows you're gonna change, if at all.
Right.
Which side of the building?
Take that from, yeah, one side of the building.
Right.
Three quarters of the building, or whatever, you know, however that works out. I mean, that's an approach.
Sure, that'd be another way to look at it, of course.
Brian, can I ask a question on your transfers? Estimated transfer fiscal year budget, twenty-three, two million eight eighty-two hundred. On the last monthly budget status report, we had capital outlay, and what we have as the budget is two million two ninety-five fifty. Is that, is this two eight eight oh two hundred in addition to? Is it, I don't understand why they're not reconciling.
The, there are some other transfers out of the general fund that went to Medicaid for budget. So, when I, let me get it up. We had, I think our budget workshop and then budget hearing.
Well, what I'm looking at is what was presented at the, at the board meeting in September. It's the September twenty-twenty-two monthly budget status report, and it specifically states under expenditures, capital outlay. So I'm just trying to reconcile, what is this two million two ninety as opposed to this two million eight eighty?
No, we're looking at two different things. The two million eight eighty is.
Probably.
Is, is the, is the transfer that I estimated that would only, that would be to get us to our sixteen point six seven percent fund balance, based on where I projected we'd land.
Okay.
Okay, so if you look, if you go down on the expenditure side, oh, go up a little bit. See where that, that two million nine hundred and seventy thousand two hundred? The two point eight is part of that, the other variance between the two point eight eight and that two point nine is we do some transfers to Med, the Medicaid fund for running that program. So, that transfers out is all transfers from the general fund going to any other fund. So that included the budgeted two point eight, because there's more than just the two point eight.
Okay, Rosanna, can you scroll down to the next page, where it says capital outlays? Keep going, right there, no, a little farther up. Okay, right there. It says capital outlay, under expenditures, right there, for two two nine oh.
All other funds, that would be, yes, that would be the expenditures that we were thinking that we would be able to do this year, we'd transfer the money over. That's the spending side and other funds, not in the general fund, that's transferring over to that fund four twenty-one, and, and budgeting.
Projected.
I'm just, projected budgeting that we would spend some of those dollars we transferred. I didn't have any project. I didn't have any project line item, I was just putting a dollar so we had capacity.
Okay, so I guess where I'm just a little confused is I know that the board asked for money to be specifically allocated over in its own world. Is that this two eight eight oh? Or is, because it's not a clear picture for me, I apologize.
So.
Well, I think this is, yeah, that's the number that, that we were talking about as far as the board working through how those funds would be spent.
Okay.
Am I correct?
Yes, so, so I projected that we would transfer two point eight million dollars from the general fund to this fund I'm calling Fund Four Twenty-One.
Okay.
Okay, that was in budget, so that's the transfer over.
Okay.
I then projected that we would be spending some of those dollars this year, this fiscal year, but maybe not all of them.
Right.
Because of timing. And so that, and I had nothing tagged in for a specific project. It was just given us capacity to spend. So that's, that's spending side. So that, that's what we did, trying to follow the board's guidance.
See, that number, yeah, if, if, maybe what you're struggling is with is that number doesn't match up with the, the transfer number. But it's within the transfer number.
Okay, I get that the two eight eight oh is within the transfer number. I do understand that and I do get that. I guess we just have this capital outlay sitting there and I'm trying to understand where that's coming from. But what you're saying is it's coming from this two eight eight oh.
And a few other sources, like I, some would be also from the bus depreciation fund, where we buy the buses, that would be part of those numbers. Because those are all funds lumped together, all other funds, so it's not just one fund.
Right. Right, and that I understand, I'm just trying to figure it out where. Because it, it was never crystal clear when the board came up with a specific dollar amount and then it became, it just kind of bounced around, so I'm just trying to find it, i- is really what I'm trying to do. Based on, now you're saying, well, if we, if we stay within the six point or sixteen, um, point six seven percent, which, you know, the policy states between eight and sixteen. So we're, we're trying to bring it down because before, when we were going through the budget thing, we were so over that it's like, come on, you can't sit over here when we say sixteen and keep going out asking for more money. That just isn't, you, you can't justify that to the taxpayer. So I'm just trying to figure out where all these monies are coming from.
Well.
Because I'm bouncing around.
Correct, well, you gotta remember, budget is all projections.
That I understand.
And so my, my estimate of the two point eight million dollars was, that amount was based on if we ended our fund balance at, at a certain level and then, but we wanted just our fund balance to be at sixteen point six seven percent. Based on our total expenditures for that year, two point eight was the math. We, our fund balance was not as high as I projected, so if we do the math, the sixteen point six seven percent is the two point six million. We can certainly transfer the whole budgeted amount over if that's the board's desire, then our ending fund balance in June relatively would be a little less than sixteen point six seven. Correct, I was just going by that number as, as a starting point. And then we do transfer that over, once we make that transfer over, that whole amount is certainly available to this, to be spent. It would be unlikely we'd be able to have all those projects done by June thirtieth. So that amount will roll over from year to year. And continuing.
Sounds great. Changing the topic. Do you have a feel, Mike, for what it would cost to paint the, the Lakewood Middle School? Any kind of feel for that?
The exterior or?
Exterior, yeah.
True, I don't, I'm not super in tune with, with paint contractors. I'm getting a bid right now to do the gym, the in, you know, the inside.
Oh, good.
Once I get that, I'll have probably a better idea of what it would cost to do the outside, but I would guess you're probably looking at eighty, eighty grand?
Yeah, we just got a.
Right in there?
We just got a bid for our house and it's four thousand square feet and it was ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe, maybe a hundred grand.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, like even probably higher, they just did a hotel in Sandpoint and it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Outlet exterior.
Hotel, yeah, that, yeah.
Couple stories, so you laid it out flat.
It'd probably be pretty dang close, so, yeah.
Here, here's my concern. And it's, it's one with our public. Little backstory, a number of years ago when Brad Murray was superintendent, the, the, the grounds at the high school got to looking pretty tough. And so I had a chance to visit with Brad and I said, you know, you need to understand something. Eventually, you're going to go to the public and ask them more money to do things. Most people never see anything about a school except what they see when they drive by.
Kind of appeal.
And if you can't demonstrate that you take care of what you have and make good use of the money you have, they'll never give you another dollar.
Exactly.
And I think that's where we are.
Yeah, we've been there for two years.
Like it or not, we've got to do something with the exterior of these buildings.
Right, well, I, well, I want to, so.
So, you know, and, you know, if, if we don't have enough money to just go out and contract to replace siding and windows and doors on every one of these buildings and in the meantime, we've got to bring them back as best we can.
Right.
And if that requires, you know, some updating, minimal updating and, and painting, fine, let's do it. That's, that's kind of where I am. And the ones that we can afford to do the wholesale project on, then let's do that too. Because we're, we're there, we're, we're going to be out, you know, hat in hand to the public.
Yep.
And we've, we've got to be able to demonstrate that we've, we're taking care of what we have.
So, um, we've had conversations at board meetings about how much of this capital outlay budget do, do we want to spend and how much do you want to save? That's the other part of this conversation because we have two point six million sitting there. And you look at the other sheet that was up there. Five hundred thousand dollars for a building to recite it. You have enough money for four buildings if there's nothing underneath it that's pretty big.
And they're all the same size, which they're not.
Right, but just, uh, you know, rough estimate, right?
Just throwing that out there, right?
Right, so that's the four buildings we're talking about, but that's not painting them, that's just reciting them. So do we, do, but that's if you're okay with spending all of that money. So that's the other part of the conversation is what is the board's pleasure with regard to trying to set aside some money to offset the cost of a bond? Or do we use the money to take care of the buildings that we currently have?
You won't pass a bond if you can't demonstrate you're taking care of what you have, is my point.
Yep, I agree.
Unfortunately, that's just, I think, reality.
Well, on this list, we have four schools that need to replace siding and trim and exterior doors.
Yep. We can't replace the siding and not paint it, so we have to, we have to calculate that to the end of the equation.
And so as you asked, you know, your, your idea of replacing siding and trim, is that replacing it with exactly the same materials that we have on the buildings now or something different?
The bid I got was like for like, now another option could be metal. You could change up the material now. We had to do a cost comparison to see long range, you won't have the paint aspect of it. Might be more money upfront along, you know, down the road, it will, it will pay for itself. But yeah, it was like for like when I got that bid, T one eleven. Yep. Yep.
But you could use hardy board or something like that.
Sure, yeah, we've got options for material.
So we don't run into the same issue with the T one eleven.
Yep.
At least it'd be, because tin's gonna fade over time, although it can be painted.
Right.
Or at least the hardy board or some kind of cement, you know, L P cement product or something would not deteriorate like that. I mean, the weather, it wouldn't matter even if you couldn't keep it painted every year.
Correct, and talking with Gino when they came out and I walked them around Athol, they're, they're seeing a trend, at least their company, on new construction of, of schools going metal.
Yep.
So.
If you look at the, uh, the Nexus School, uh, on, the New Skelton Prairie for Corraling, it's elementary school, two stories and it's metal siding. You know, K-Tech, even when that was there, sort of the brick and then the metal above, seems to be a style that a lot of, uh, schools are doing.
So where do we want to go?
Yeah, it's hard to.
What's the metal on?
It's so hard to know because, you know, we have this money right now, right here, right now.
Metal will make them look like they're updated.
Make it look like what?
They're updated.
Oh.
Which school is in worse shape, Spirit Lake or Athol?
That's tough, I'd say probably, probably on the whole scale, because you've got sections of buildings that are actually not too bad. I'd say there's probably more, Spirit Lake is the school that actually has holes in the siding. So I would say Spirit Lake probably, but Athol's not far behind. Athol just seems like it's got sections that are better than Spirit Lake does. I can't think of any other school that actually had holes in the siding.
I'm sure that's true because, you know, those buildings were added onto four, maybe in some cases five times over a fairly long period of time.
Right.
So the oldest part of the building, which was built back in the seventies sometime or another, I don't remember which year. You know, are probably the, the areas that are in toughest shapes. Some of those, uh, additions were not done until, uh, late eighties and nineties, and in the nineties.
Yeah, there was part, most, some were part of the nineties.
Yeah.
The, mid nineties, yeah.
Because, you know, during that period of time, we were growing all of the district at such a scale that every time we did a bond election, even when we built a new school, we added some into the bond election to make additions on other buildings. There are two reasons for that, one because of need, the other was because everybody got a piece of the pie that way. And that's part of how you sell things.
Right, right, right.
How about, how about the doors and the windows at, uh, Spirit Lake? Well, once again, some of those, some of those exterior doors are probably thirty years newer than the other parts.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be hit and miss, like we talked about before, where you could do the older section of the building, you know, where, where they're rusting through, things like that. Where we made, you know, tried to make repairs that way. Necessarily wouldn't have to do the whole, the whole building in one shot, because you're right, some of the stuff in the hardware is newer. But even that being said, I mean, it's still, it's still got age on it. So, I mean, I, you know, it typically, well, typically you would do it all at one, at one time in a perfect world, so everything was the same.
In a perfect world, we'd have unlimited resources.
A lot of the problems that we had with like the roofing and stuff is that.
We have a magic wand.
There were just sections done.
Yeah.
And so you'd never had a complete working mechanical system. You had a section that was good and then you had a section that was bad, a section that was good and a section that was bad, so, I mean.
And again, because the ages of the different sections.
Right, correct.
Different from one building.
And their exposure.
Absolutely, yeah.
So kind of back to what I suggested a while ago, if we, if we say, okay, we'll spend five hundred thousand dollars in Spirit Lake on a project to replace siding, trim, painted, and as many doors or windows as is necessary, we can then clutch it.
Who keeps highlighting and removing the highlights?
I did.
Okay. I'm like, who's doing that? The Dysolink, where my brain was at. Okay, Bob, so if we allocate five hundred thousand and it comes in over, then what?
You're sharing with it the five hundred. You know, if you, if you take that out to a bid, uh, now you can, there, there are different ways you can do it, you can do it with alternates, for example. Base bid could be, you know, all the siding, but no doors and windows. Alternate would be for some doors or all the doors, second alternate for some doors. The other option is if the bid comes in high, you've got to do a fallback. And, uh, you know, you can either go through a, a rebid after paring down what you're asking for.
The other way that we could approach it with the bidding is, put a RFQ out for a construction manager. And instead of doing traditional bidding, so the RFQ is like doing an architect selection, so you, you pick the construction manager based on qualifications. And then they come on board, and so for like, um, this is how, like, the Parker Center is built. So it's called GCCN, General Contractor Construction Manager. So you have, you, you've had your firm now, your construction manager, they start going through the scope of the project and things like that. And then we'll give you a, a, a price of what they can do that project with. As a general rule, those projects do come in a little higher than traditional bidding.
Because you've got another layer in there.
Well, you got a little, well, the, the general construction, the construction manager usually is with, uh, the firm. And they have to be qualified to do that by the state. There's a process that they have to do to have that, like General Construction has that. And I'm sure T W Clark and some of the other, Lightig and some of the big ones have that. But then you could work and say, this is the scope of work, they can come, you can work on that. And some of those things, when you try to do value engineering as far as, well, maybe we can't do that. You, you're working with a person and then, and for a small, smaller projects like this, sometimes it, it works really well. And, and is within the bid laws, so that's another option we could do.
Correct.
Who, who's the primary, uh, do you know, do you know, the primary?
Because, do you know, Mike?
I don't.
You speak Chris Barrera.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, um, he might still be there.
He's, he's still there.
Mike, do you feel it would be advantageous to go with a construction project manager?
I think on the scale of the job, it would, sure.
Does the, this is gonna be a really dumb question, but does our, um, the construction part of K-Tech for kid, our kids, does that include like the full blown project with the painting or is it just the construction?
They actually build for Habitat.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we couldn't, if, if they paint.
We've asked about that before.
Why we couldn't have our K-Tech kids paint the building?
And I know when we were there, I don't think you were with, were you with them?
Yeah, they wanted work.
They want work, they're more than willing to come do anything for our district.
Colby, Colby presented at the chamber and that was basically what he said. My husband feels guilty when we take our vehicles in for them to work on and I, like, they're begging for opportunities to do that, so that would be a way for our kids to get.
And I don't know what the contract is through Habitat, but, and if there has, if it has to be contractual or not, that component I don't know, but I do know that he was like, we'll do anything, you want us to build anything, we'll do it, so.
I just don't, I didn't, I don't know.
I'm not sure, some of that might be the challenge with the timing of those projects, we're during the summer and they're not there.
They could do
Right, but if we.
Smaller projects, uh, you know, of, of construction of some sort or another as you need it during the course of the year.
But couldn't, we couldn't, why couldn't we, if that, if we're, I guess if we're tailoring the work to something that they're actually doing in school, I mean, maybe we could entice them to work for the summer crew, knowing that that's the job they would be doing.
We go to them and ask them what they can provide and when can they provide it and, you know, let them tell us.
In the spring, once the snow melts and before they go into summer break or?
I mean, we don't even know if it has to.
I mean, we don't even know if it has to be summer. We need to let them tell us when they're available and what they can do and. Yeah, anything to. Yeah, lessen the load a little bit and.
And give them the opportunity.
Right, I would love that, right.
Well, and what a great, yeah, what a great partnership.
Oh, yeah.
Huge.
I'll check into it and just see that Mike.
Sure.
True, yeah.
These are the kinds of projects we're kinda looking at, what.
They could paint the gym at the middle school. I'm seeing that there. That's a gym door project. They could do it. They could help on the painting crew. Do it, no, they can. Well, for me, I think it would be prudent, we have to apply some money to the middle school. And we have to either pick Spirit Lake or Apple. I would love to do both of them. So those three schools really are the ones I think we need to focus our most attention on, because they are becoming so dilapidated. I mean, John Brown as well, but it's kinda tucked away, where you've got. Apple not so much is the face of the highway, but Spirit Lake, yes. And the middle school, yes. For right now, yes, we have to do stuff there. We have to.
What, what's the estimate on, uh, re-siding the junior high where it's needed?
Can you hold down to? Seven hundred to nine hundred thousand.
Seven hundred, nine hundred?
And we are just estimating by square footage, just cause it's bigger than the other building.
Because we've, we've already taken a step to take care of the doors, right?
Well, we just got the bid. Before, that's three hundred thousand right there. Three hundred and eleven, three thirteen was the bid.
And that'll come out of this, why they're using, talking about here.
Well, I think that we. You know, just listening and, and Spirit Lake having those definite absolute holes in the, in the siding, I think that that's. That would be my vote for where we.
Where we start?
Where we start.
Well, if you did the junior high, or the middle school, like, still a junior high. And, uh, and Spirit Lake, so that's about a million and a half. Round number.
Yeah, you gotta do something with Apple. It's, it's ridiculous. The, the fascia's fallen off of it, it's completely rotted. It won't hold paint. I mean, it's horrible. And I know it's not on the highway, but it's the main thoroughfare to everything. And the people, I mean, it's, it's wretched. It's in horrible condition. It's embarrassing.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, even the parents are offering to help paint or do anything.
What can we do to?
Yeah. It's, I mean, it's gotta be done. You know, we keep having these conversations.
Yeah, we do.
Each year, this is where we get to, um, so I'm, uh, when we, uh. Did it at the beginning, when we did budget, I thought at the end of it, we had, the general fund was quite large. And we allocated two point eight million, or two point nine, whatever it was, to Capital Outlay. Is that what it was? And then we had, um, another, I can't remember all the numbers and we didn't have any documentation. So I thought we had more money. I know at one point we said yes on one point seven six on this list that we were given. And part of that was ESER funds for the plant facility projects update.
Right, and some of those have been going on, and you'll see, and you know, some of the bleachers and things like that.
Right.
You'll, you'll see some of those bills actually come in here, cause they're being.
Right.
So, those, those things are being worked on and being wrapped up and, um. We're gonna be close to spending the end of the plant facility fund here. You know, as we wrap up this fiscal year.
Kind of looking ahead. Some money we're working with now, which will actually allow it to roll into the next fiscal year because of the timing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's the two point eight roughly. When we get the, to the end of, not this fiscal year, but the following fiscal year. If we use some of the ESER money for the kinds of things you were talking about, that should allow us to. Uh, have the, the fund balance continue to be in the range of what we're looking at now, hopefully, something like that. So we'll have another opportunity. To look at some of these other projects at that point in time. In the interim. We pass supplemental, I've noticed my fingers are crossed.
We are working our tails.
What's gonna happen with plant silk?
The, the committee will bring forward a recommendation to the board that we run both, side by side.
Side by side? That's gutsy.
Yeah, well, that way it's, we're very transparent and we'll, the patrons will be able to.
Heaven only knows, we need the plant silk is fun.
Yeah, obviously.
Yeah, you're not, yeah, obviously, you're not gonna be able to survive long-term without it.
Yep.
Well, that makes it more of an imperative that we demonstrate to folks that we're really making the effort. Here to take care of these buildings.
Yep, I.
Well, I know I don't get a vote, I'm just a voice at the table, but, um. I, I do agree with Ramona, that if we have the funds to do all three of the buildings, I, I would hope that we would do that. To demonstrate to the patrons that we've set aside money and we're willing to take care of the buildings. Apple is in really sad shape. And it's a building that we can't, you can't paint and, and cover it up anymore. It doesn't work.
Do you know if we would be able to? If we were. I respect that the bid's coming in for school, but if we're saying we've got three to do and we wanna get three done. Would we be able to get some type of a price break for the amount of materials that we would be purchasing to do all three buildings?
I don't know how that would work if we had to get the traditional three bids, because. I guess they could bid it as such. It'd be up to the, to the company.
You could bid it all as one package, or you could bid it as three separate bids.
I mean, is it?
Yeah. I don't know that the.
Generally, you're not gonna really get, uh. I mean, there are a certain amount sometimes of scale that would help, but in construction relatively, these are actually small projects. So I don't think we would get a significant price discount if we did it all together.
I could, I could find out though, because I've got, yeah, I've got connections with, at Gino, I could just run. General question line and say, hey, here's a deal.
Right.
And see what he says, you know, if he's receptive to it.
They're, they're the contractor, they're gonna get whatever break is available.
Right.
And the materials are purchased by the contractor as a rule.
Right. No, that I do know, I mean.
You know, I think your, your thought is correct, but I think it's built into the pie, so to speak.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think we would have a. I think we would have a better project with where we're at right now with a construction manager, and the reason that is. Is that if we do a traditional bid, the bids are only as good as your bid documents. And really creating good specifications. And with that, you, we really need either the help of, you know, an architect. Or things like that to really do that. If you had the construction manager. Where you don't have, where you're not doing design, you're just doing these repairs, then I think you would be able to have that conversation. With the firm you selected based on their qualifications to really get what is best to address the needs. So I think, and you could certainly then have that construction manager for all three of the projects.
Do you have someone in mind for that?
You have to go, you have to go through a process like an architect selection. You, you advertise in the paper, you say, we're asking for. Construction manager for, you know, these projects, base your qualifications, and then, um, then. Yeah, certainly usually the bigger construction companies, um, you know, will come and do that, I think, uh.
What do they usually charge, like ten percent plus, or whatever, you know, the project itself, or?
No, it's usually less than that, um, and, and a lot of times if you're hiring the construction manager, so. They roll some of those costs in eventually the bid that they give you. And there is a point where there's sort of a, um. Uh, you know, there is a point where you're doing a negotiation, it's just like you do with your architect.
Right.
You know, you hire your architect and they sort of do that, and then you sort of negotiate their fee. So the construction manager, they're gonna come in and say, okay, well. We're gonna re-side Spirit Lake Elementary, um, you know, we think, you know, given on material costs, our overhead, da-da-da-da. Us helping you manage the project, you selected us, here's the price, and then there could be negotiations at that point, but eventually you're gonna sort of settle. The nice thing about those contracts, and I've actually never done, I've just, you know, talked to some of my peers, is that. Once they give you the price, they're sort of on the hook for that. And change orders are usually less, because they've sort of agreed. That's why sometimes bids in them have to come a little higher, cause they do wanna sort of cover themselves for the unforeseen.
Contingency.
Yeah, well, hopefully, hopefully it's not that high, but no, I know what you're saying. Yeah, well, that, but, um, I mean, there's a lot of data. For larger projects, um, on Washington's, uh, school construction assistance program, cause they'll have all the data. Um, from projects the state helped fund, and whether they used a traditional design bid build method. Or construction manager, or, um, you know, bid build, where it's just. And what those costs come in, and, and definitely the construction manager, general contractor comes in a little bit higher. But if you ask people, often they're a better, um, they get a better project.
Is this going to bump the project out even further, to go this route?
I, well, you know, the timing on the projects, I, it's hard for me to estimate that now. I know that, um. Where we are for us, if we were gonna start going out there and looking for bids, and we have to create the bid docs, we, we have to do that, yeah, Mike.
Well, yeah, but again, you're gonna have to have some assistance.
We'd have to have, I, no, some of that expertise, I, I just don't personally have, and.
Because you have to specify a certain product, uh, you know, or.
No, my point in asking that is, Mike's like, I can go get the bids. Now, if we have to get a project manager going through that whole process, how much longer is that bumping everything out in order to get the project manager? Before then we can go and, and do the project?
I, I, as a timing, it's hard for me to say. I don't think it's bumping it out any further.
Okay.
Because if, if we don't get a project manager to help us with specs, I have to get an architect to help me with specs.
Okay.
And, or have Mike come up with the specs. You know, if you feel comfortable writing that detailed level of, of specifications, um, you know, but that's. I mean, so, I, there's, you know, some of the projects, when you have to give the specifications, go out to bid. I mean, given our timing right now, even if you were gonna do, wanna do a project. For example, let's say we passed a bond in the summer, or last March. This is be about the time we'd be going out to bed for summer projects. That's just sort of the cycle of, of school construction. Yeah, I mean, some of these projects do take, it.
Well, you've already found out that the projects will go through the summer, and that makes absolute sense. Um, I'm just, if we now go the route of getting a, a contract manager person, whatnot. By the way, it was explained, you say, you, you have to put out what you want in this and that. So then that person gets hired. And then it seems like after that person is there, then we go out for the bids, which then means we have to figure out where we're going to land within those bids. And then we have to go get the materials. So I just, what I don't wanna have is, you know, we just keep prolonging. Okay, you promise me?
You bet.
All right, thanks, Bob.
We'll crack the lip on this guy's.
Okay. That's all I care about. You're done.
Do we need to have, um, an action item on the agenda for Wednesday for the board to take action to make the. The decisions that we're talking about here? Are you, are you just gonna give us direction?
Well, we should probably take action on it, so that there's no deviation from it. Not that that would happen.
Nope, I won't make the decision that we're gonna use the money for something else.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I would tell you, Sheldon, you know, going from past experience, and this is a, this is a different age than when.
It is, yes, I get it.
When, uh, you know, we were building buildings before, and I acknowledge that. But, uh, just to give you an example. When we built Garwood. I think we opened the bids in February. Broke ground on March fifteenth. Started school in Garwood, the second week of September. That's how quickly it can move. That's not gonna happen in this day and age.
Probably not.
Material shortages and other.
Right.
Labor shortages.
Better keeper was even faster.
But, but we're not talking that timeline, we're talking about, this is currently November, so.
Right.
You know, a lot can be done between now and the first of the year, before getting out of it.
Right.
So that, from the first of the year until early spring. All that background work that you were talking about takes place.
It would be hugely beneficial, should the board choose to pursue a levy, to be able to let everyone know. This is what we, this is where we're going. These are, these three schools are on target to be improved before the start of next school year.
You know, I like that.
So, yeah, yeah. How do you feel about, oh, you already said that you thought it was a good idea to the construction manager. I can see where it would be hugely beneficial. Because of all the knowledge that they bring, even though it costs a little bit more, but I think we would actually maybe save time. Because where we would run into hiccups, or maybe run into something we didn't anticipate, then it would take more time to figure it out and, you know, maybe get another bid. Or fit, they, they would sort of circumvent that, because it would be in their lap to do the project, you know? Um, so I can see where that would be beneficial, and they know that coming on. So, you know, they could give them updates, give us updates kind of thing, or, um.
Yeah, I like the thought of.
And they would hire with you, correct?
Potential for the higher quality. Project.
Yeah.
There are some other things that can come into the mix there too. You know, we typically in the past put penalty clauses on contracts.
Yep.
So that they were done on time.
Right, yep. I just have to giggle. I'm sorry. We saw how that worked with the buses, so, I'm, I'm, I'm so apprehensive about trusting contracts, so. But it is water under the bridge.
Well, no, I just pointed out, it's, you know, when you start putting the contract together, you know, there are other things that come into play.
Right.
So let's sort back to these guys. If we give you authorization tonight. To move forward with those three projects.
Technically four, right, cause we're, well, we're already doing both the middle school doors, so.
Right.
So we're just doing the other three.
And Jim, painting the gym.
Well, I thought that was one of the three.
Yeah, the middle school is one of the three.
Square Lake and Apple.
Yes, yes.
So if we give you authorization to move forward, based on the scenario that Brian outlined. Do you foresee not being able to have everything in place to get that work done by the end of next summer?
We would do a RFQ to try to get the construction manager firm, you know, selected. And then, at that point, you could start working with them, getting specs for summer work and. It would be contingent upon their ability. To get materials and, and in their schedule. Um, I guess I'm concerned. The one thing I am concerned about, just as overall general contractors right now, is I bet you some of them, their summer schedules are already ported out.
That's a possibility.
Could be, but. Could be, but.
Maybe not.
We're in a different time, but we're entering another different time, I think.
Yes, we are.
We are in the construction business.
Yep, things are slowing down.
Things are gonna turn around a little bit for contractors.
For sure. Things definitely go in cycles.
And, uh, you know, some of them will come off the gravy train and get on the hungry train as a result of that.
Right.
Well, it's not.
So our timing is not bad in that respect.
Regardless of what we do, there's no point in postponing or delaying it and pushing it out further. Getting started now, no matter when it's gonna finalize, getting started now is not gonna hurt us at all.
So assuming you start the battle.
I think making the decision and moving it forward.
The end timeline is trying to be about August fifteenth.
I'm not yelling. I'm just passionate. I feel your passion.
That's essentially two weeks before school starts. You gotta have that much time in order to get the school ready. And if it spills over a little bit, you got a little bit of cushion there, but not much.
We opened Betty Keifer and they were still building on the inside and we had no grass when we started school.
You had no what?
No grass. The staff.
Oh, no, heavens, no.
Staff planted sod the weekend before school started and.
People planted sod.
Contractors were still in the building when we were having school.
Yeah, absolutely.
You just make it work, right?
But that, again, that was a, that was a push project.
We broke ground in May for Betty Keifer and started school in September.
Yeah.
And they.
It can be done.
It can be done.
You have to believe.
Yep. That's right.
Look, that's a song.
The glass is full.
So, let's see, now we're talking, uh, about two million dollars.
Two point zero nine million dollars.
Two million dollars.
Taking the high on all of those.
If they were close on their highest, yeah.
Yep.
So if we spend two million dollars tonight, that's a good night's work, huh?
Yep.
That's a great night's work. For a good cause.
Does that include the three hundred fifteen?
Yep. Yep, it's four, four twenty-five, four fifty, nine hundred and three fifteen.
One thing I would like is I would like to see all the schools' budgets. I want line items of what everything's allocated for. I know each school gets a chunk and we've never seen that and I, I really wanna see where the money's going because I have no idea with their budgets and how their money's being spent. And I do wanna see if there's actually this line item, two hundred some odd thousand dollars at each school for sports.
That's.
That's a different issue than the capital projects, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but I still would like to see the, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the, the money for the sports, um, is district money, but they take care of the paying, paying the buses, paying the officials.
Right.
Um, buying the uniforms. It's all of that.
Okay, yeah. It is, we've never seen it? You know, we've never seen it in that way?
Well, I know the district paid officials. The school didn't, so.
Well, it comes out of those district dollars.
Right, but I mean, the district pays for the officials, not the buildings. Because their school's constantly being, I've seen on the bills list, they're constantly.
Correct.
Being reimbursed for referees, so I don't understand why it would be in their budget if their budget isn't being depleted to pay the referees if the district's.
Well, there's two different budgets we, I think we talk about. We, I have what they call their building budgets. And that is district funds from Fund One Hundred, from the general fund, that they use for, you know, material supplies, paper, um, you know, things like that that they're buying for their school. It also includes, uh, the athletic travel, when we, like, when we charter a bus, that, that's what's being, it's general fund dollars. It's not coming from like their, their football gate money. Um, so that's what I sort of call their building budgets. It's still district funds, really levy funds. But it's under the purview of the principals managing it. I think those are the dollars that trustee Grissom was talking about when he said a couple hundred thousand because that, I think it's a, it's a hundred and change for one of the schools and another hundred for Lakewood High. Then outside of that, then we also have their student activity account budgets. And those are, you know, the things that they fundraised for and, and ASB cards and things like that. That's sort of separate. That's really not being used for what you're talking about.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
Right, that, just so we, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
So you, what you wanted to see is the district Fund One Hundred, building budgets.
Yeah, I mean, I couldn't easily, I mean, the same report that the principals get every week or the, we could provide.
Yeah, I mean, I know we, uh, we already get the student funds information, that, that, that printout. But I've just never seen what, I mean, I know every school has their own little accounting department and all that, but I've never seen what that looks like, you know, all the pieces and how it all comes back into the district's.
Yeah, I mean, rather the school budgets, you know, for theirs, they, they only have about seven or eight line items really with a different dollar amount. So we can provide like the most recent month of report and then if you want a detailed report, we could do that also.
Okay, that'd be great. Thanks.
Okay, so do we need to have any further conversation about where we wanna go with the capital projects?
Let's move.
Move with it?
You can give a length motion?
Are we waiting for, because we're in a workshop. We can't do an action item. We're in a workshop.
Luckily, we have a meeting on Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, we will.
We have a quorum here. We can't we do business.
It was posted as that. It was posted as a workshop.
But we already gave the direction.
We did give direction.
So that's, they know where to go.
But we'll formalize it.
Right, on Wednesday.
Formalizing an action item on Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Resolution.
Just do it. Just get it done.
See, that's how things get prolonged. We talk about it, we talk about it, we talk about it.
Well, sometimes we've given direction. We just get to keep giving the same direction. Alrighty.
If you're gonna do something, you may as well have a little fun, don't stay.
That's why we're here.
That's right, have fun.
All the time.
Because you love spending time with us. I love you all. That's why.
Alrighty, well, um, if there's no further discussion, I'm happy to adjourn the meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Seven twenty.
Meeting adjourned, seven twenty.
That's worthy and admirable.
What?
Well.
What?